Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the June, uh, meeting for the Kit Town Hypses only Board of Appeals. We all rise for our pleasure of allegiance. Start with roll call. Christine. Tony S. You're. And I am Tony G, uh, will be filling in as the chairman for Paul Leahy, who is, uh, not here, not present this evening. Um, the agenda is, uh, posted in the corner here for anybody who did not grab one. Uh, we will, this is a hybrid format, so we do have some folks joining us on Zoom tonight as well as in person. Uh, the link is on the town page. Uh, we will go through each agenda item as it's listed in the agenda. Uh, each apps can have the ability to come up and describe what their application is. Uh, or have the ability to ask questions at that point. Uh, we will let hear from anybody in the, in the, that's present or on Zoom, uh, for or against the application. And then what, uh, the ability to ask questions for that. And then after we hear all of the, um, applications. We will close the public hearing at that point in time. At which time, or we may or may not take a quick break. Uh, but we will then, um, not take any further comments at that point in time. And the board would discuss each one of the agenda items. Um, just to know if, uh, you're waiting to hear a result, you can stay till the end of the meeting tonight. Or you can call the zoning administrator in the morning, uh, for your results. And, uh, with that being said. Agenda item number one. Uh, is anybody here for fourteen Catskill Avenue? Raymond. If you please state your name and you'll be sworn in. You need to sit down to over there and speak into the mighty.
William Jones.
Liana and William, do you both swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I guess. So let's go ahead and describe your application.
Uh, I'm applying for variance for, uh, pool, my backyard. Um, asking for three feet from my deck and, uh, ten feet from the edge of the pool to the fence line, uh. Uh, property line, yes. I'm hoping to not have to cut down any trees in the yard to move the pool from that area. And, um, my neighbors on the side of me at sixteen Catskill and also, uh, on the other side of the fence of the property line. Have no issues with this pool.
Neighbor to the right. So surrounding, uh, my property, we have no, we're good, you know, we have quality neighbors, we have no complaints about the pool. Um, they, everyone has pools and I never, um, cross the street, you know, and we don't foresee any issues.
So when we were out there talking the other day, you had mentioned cutting down trees, so if we moved it in either direction to try and avoid there, you you incur taking down trees and.
Yes, we have, uh, two.
There's a walnut tree.
Walnut tree. And, uh, hate to lose those.
Fond of it. It's a big tree.
And are you on town? Water?
And yes, a town.
I don't have any other questions. Christine.
No questions. I have no questions.
Tony S.
Uh, no questions.
Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions? Like to comment on this application?
Yes, I am, uh, uh, my name is David Murdy.
Mister Murdy, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay, Mister Murdy. What'd you like to say?
Um, I am on the deed for forty Alder Drive.
Yeah, we're.
That's a, uh, that agenda item hasn't been called yet. This is a question for fourteen Catskill Avenue.
I'm sorry, it said to call in at six o'clock, so.
Uh, yeah, so which, which application were you looking for?
I was looking for, um, the, uh, variance for, uh, setback, construction setback, uh, for uh, Alder Drive.
Clayton Place.
Is that Clayton Place?
Yes.
Okay.
That, that'll be agenda and item number two, that's up next.
All right, I'm sorry.
Nope, that's okay, you'll have the ability to talk about that when it comes up.
Thank you.
Um, does anybody else on Zoom have any comments on this application? Fourteen Catskill Avenue. We're reviewing fourteen Catskill Avenue. Uh, okay, if there's no comments, um, I would move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Those opposed? Uh, public hearing is closed. And motion carries.
So you guys can wait till the end of the meeting, if you want to find out, or you can go home, watch the end on Zoom, or you can call the office in the morning, whichever you prefer.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to item number two, that is for Clayton Pay, uh, place. Ian Banker. Please state your name, please.
John McKee.
John, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
And Mister Banker's on the phone, you may want to swear him in also on Zoom.
Mister Banker, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Well, actually, I see that there's also Melissa Banker on, will you be commenting as well, because then we might as well do all three?
Melissa, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay.
I'm John McKee, I'm the contractor.
Okay, do you want to discuss the application?
Yeah, so we're, um, we're putting a dormer on the back of the house, it's, uh, it's not changing the footprint at all, but it's, uh, I understand it needs a variance, so we're looking to get a setback. A variance, uh, whatever the specifications are now, so I didn't even look at it. And it's not changing the footprint of the house, a lot of houses in the neighborhood have it, probably half of them have dormers on them. And that's it, it's pretty straightforward.
Think I have any questions, Christine, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Felicity, you have any questions?
No questions.
Uh, no questions.
Does anybody in the audience have any remarks for this application?
Mister Murdy, now would be the time.
Hello.
Yep, hi, can you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Marion Murdy.
Marion, Marion, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do. To the best of my knowledge.
Okay, what would you like to add?
Well, I'd like to ask the question. What is this doing to my feeling of what's going to face me if this um, variance or whatever you're calling it is go, is granted and what it will do to me.
Application is to add a dormer. Do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, um, it's gonna, it's, the dormer's going up, it's just adding a second floor on the back of the house. The height of the roof isn't going to change, I'm not getting any closer to any property lines that are already, the houses are, the footprint of the house isn't changing. Um, there are multiple houses within, you know, eyesight of the backyard that all have dormers. And I, I did talk to this lady about this and I showed her one behind her that had it, so it's not going to affect her in any way.
You did, uh, no one showed me anything. No one of Mister McKee. And, uh, I never had a conversation about what it would do.
Okay, maybe I'm thinking of somebody else, maybe, so. It's not changing. I mean, I don't see it changing anything, I don't even know why I need to get a variance, it's just on top of the house, it's just the back half of the house, so.
Why, why do you need the variance? Why?
So when these houses were originally built, the setbacks from the side property lines were smaller. The code has since changed so that now more of a side yard setback is required. And it's been the policy of the town that when you're even increasing the height even, um, even though you're not going any closer to any of the neighboring property lines, you need a variance because it's just taller, but along the same not conforming. So the house is technically non-conforming now, so by going up, you're making it slightly more non-conforming, but it's not going any closer to any of the neighbors.
Based on the plans that have been submitted, it'll stay within its existing footprint, it'll just be extended outward or upward. Does that answer your question?
I guess so.
Is there any other questions on Zoom?
Anyone else want to comment on the application for four Clayton Place?
Anybody in the audience, because a couple of people came in?
Sure. You have to come up to the microphone to, uh, so we can hear you. And if you could start by just stating your name and you can be sworn in and then we can.
Donald McKinnon.
Donald, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
What do you have to add?
But it just does not make much sense to me that buildings that have been there for fifty years, that you're not changing the outline of have to come through a variance to do anything on. I mean, if he was going on the side, I could say that. But the fact that it's going just out the back. I mean, does this mean if you go to sell a house, you now have to get some kind of a variance because it was originally built before you knew?
Now, it's only when you're, uh, doing some construction on the house. And in this instance, the fact that because it's closer, if it were, for example, right on the property line, there's a difference between having something that's maybe eight feet near the property line versus twenty feet near the property line, the, the effect on the neighbors. And that's why it's that, but in this instance, it's only the footprint. Um, so once this applicant receives, if they receive their variance tonight and they get their certificate of occupancy, then they'll be able to sell without any further involvement of the town.
But it still really doesn't make any sense to me that the original building was built to the rule.
Right, the zoning has changed since that time, and that's why it no longer conforms, and that's why we have the process, but it's it's not a, as you can see, we're almost done, uh, with this particular application, it's not going to be terribly, it's not a big change, um, and so I, I think we're, you know, probably going to be granting the variance if, uh, if, if unless we hear other comments that seem to indicate there's a problem with it, do you have a problem with the application? Oh, okay, then we're, then I think we're set, yeah.
You know, suppose we wanted to, because we live in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
If we wanted to just build something that, you know, was very small and just there. And it's within the outline of the building, you're telling us that we'd have to get a variance. Give them a bear. I mean, that makes no sense to me. From a legal point of view, it makes no sense.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. If there's no further questions, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Those opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Agenda item number three. Forty-eight Tamarack Hill Drive. All right, you'd state your name for the record.
Michael Hurd.
Michael, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay, would you like to describe your application?
Uh, just extending our fence to use more of our property. I think the issue is that it's too close, the original fence that was built, I guess in the eighties was closer to the road, but we just want to extend it down further. Um, it doesn't block any of the viewing when you're turning the curve or anything, so.
And so you're replacing the entire fence, right?
Yeah, replacing it from cedar to vinyl, but then part of it is going to be a new add-on.
Okay, so the whole fence is going to change to the new, it's right, so you're replacing what was existing.
It's a cedar six-foot fence, it's just going to vinyl.
And adding more. Okay. I didn't have a more question.
Is it going to basically go along?
Just where that, uh, where the, the orange fencing is, the temporary fencing, yeah, because it was falling, so we just took it down. We outlined it, so we already got the quote and everything, so it's just more or less getting the approval for that.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
I have no questions.
Yeah, so.
Tony S.
Well, just a comment, I noticed you've got cedar now, and, and it doesn't appear that anybody else on your street has vinyl, so I'm just kind of curious why you're doing that, but I don't know if it makes a difference in terms of the variance.
Oh, no, we're just switching to vinyl because upkeep over time is the closest minimal compared to cedar where you have to continue to wash and stain every three to five years.
Good, all right, thanks. Is there anybody in the audience that has any comments on this application? Is there anybody in Zoom that has any comments from this application?
And if you're on Zoom, we're looking at forty-eight Tamarack Hill Drive. Can just unmute yourself, raise your hand. Want to comment?
Doesn't look like anybody's trying, so I think. Won't see any, so I move to close the public hearing on agenda item number three. All those in favor?
I.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you, but again, you can wait around or call zoning administrator.
It's gonna be a little while.
Agenda item number four. Nine Forest Avenue. Somebody here for an application. Good evening, if you'd state your name for the record.
Mandy Ballant.
Mandy, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Would you like to explain the application for us, please?
Yes, I'd like to install a six-foot cedar tongue and groove fence on the side of my property for, um, safety and security and to prevent, um, people from crossing over and trespassing and doing harm to my property, and this has occurred in the past. And it's, it's just been a difficult situation for a couple of years now. It, I don't want to put in an eight-foot fence, I think a six-foot fence would be okay.
When we were there the other day, there was a small portion of fence that was in the back, is that currently yours?
Um, no, no.
No, okay. So you're looking to add just on the line, property line?
Yes.
With where it is?
Yes.
And is it all sides around, or it's just the one side?
Just the one side. And it's actually a very nice fence, you really can't see through it, and it's, um, the same on both sides. So the neighbor would have something good to look at.
I don't have any further question.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
So you have all those lovely, um, evergreens that are planted, so your plan is to put it between the evergreens and the other fence that's there?
Yes.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
Tony S.
Okay, just, uh, just to clarify, it's really a security issue for you, right, primarily?
Yes, primarily a security issue. And I'm primarily on my own, so. And I work full-time, so it's not easy being able to oversee my property twenty-four seven when I'm at work most of the time.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Is there anybody here in the audience that would like to comment on this application? Have a seat, if you remind stating your name for the record, please.
Uh, Peter, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Mr. Case, what would you like to add?
Oh, I, I haven't mentioned, I live right behind you, for some reason, we don't. Well, no, as I go in the middle of the night, I'm, so I don't really get to see you. Uh, I didn't see the person walking along.
Yeah.
I did get the thing on the mail and didn't know exactly where you were going to fence up. And when I heard an eight-foot, I said, or not do an eight-foot.
Yeah, no.
I just don't understand. Any residential put any put fence up. That's just my opinion. But I also know when the guy came and did the survey, because they put a fence under property.
Yes.
He did the backyard and I was working on my yard. I showed him where the boundary line, helped him out. And then you were having an issue with that person over on the corner.
On the side, right, right.
Which that person is new, they bought the house a year before you.
A couple of months before.
Yeah. So they're both new, I've been there for thirty years, nobody's walked on properties, I have the fence behind you over the stone wall. Kind of confused about the security issues that were going, I'm not saying we're not saying, because I don't see on that street. But we didn't want the eight-foot fence coming on the back of our property. We didn't know if it was going to go eight foot over here, then come around and everybody was going to start putting fences.
Oh, no.
Because that would be most people have a three and a half fence in the front corners. All around us. So I just didn't know what was going on. So if she's having a problem with that and just want to put it there, then I'm okay with.
Okay. So just to clarify, and I think it's my understanding is it's just on the right side of the house, if you were facing the house, and we are talking a six-foot fence.
Sorry, it was going to be eight foot coming around the back and everything else, I was going to be a whole different.
Yeah.
She wanted to put a six-foot back, I would, I would kind of get rid of her stone wall, that was kind of. But the fence is on the other side of mine, so.
Well, I've actually had property damage to my homes by people crossing over to my property, so.
I don't know which, I would, they're not coming from my side.
Oh, no.
They're coming from, because across the street is the
The town.
Townhouses with a big fence, so I don't know where these.
They're coming from the adjoining property.
The one from the left, from you?
If you're facing my home.
Your house facing this way.
No, no, he's a very nice man.
Okay.
He's the one with the white fence, it's the one that has the, um, chain link fence.
Okay, that's the new people moved in?
They, yeah, two months before I.
So that's, that's what the issue is getting out there.
So if you could address your comments to the board, rather than.
I'll just ask him the questions.
Yeah, right, but it's.
Well, because she's having problems with the people that moved wherever they came from.
Right.
And then she moved in and now they're having problems because she put the fence somewhat on her lawn.
So if I understand it, the current application, you have no issues with as proposed, a six-foot fence along the side, is that correct?
I just did want to make sure we're going to come around, talk to you guys about eight-foot fence stuff, which I don't understand how anybody wanted to protect some residential.
Okay, was there anything else you wanted to add about the application?
Okay. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to comment on this application? See anybody? Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to comment on this, and we're talking about nine Forest Avenue? Don't see anybody. So therefore I move to close the public hearing, uh, on agenda item number four, four.
Second.
All those in favor?
Uh, I.
Those opposed? That motion is carried, thank you.
So I can wait for your decision?
You can wait for the end of the meeting for the decision. That brings us to forty-nine George Road, is there anybody here for that application? King George, King George, sorry, King George here. Do you mind stating your name for the record?
Jeffrey, Jeffrey.
Jeffrey, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Are you a representative for the applicant?
I am.
Uh, would you mind pointing the application to us?
It's a, uh, request to have a, um, a pool closer than me.
And what is the purpose of having it in that location?
Uh, there was some restrictions to do, uh, some trees that can be moved without enormous. And so they don't, the owners don't want to cut the tree down.
In the application, I don't know if it's here and I missed it, what's the size of the pool you're looking for?
Uh, it's about, uh, six feet by about
twelve feet. Six foot then?
Size, uh, in a town.
And it'll be going like back, over, right?
So.
Outside?
Yes.
And if it went sideways, that's where the tree would come in, right?
And is it going to be, is the pool going to be closer to the property line than the one that's currently there?
That's the pool.
Oh, that's, that's the pool, it's ready to, okay.
It's not filled.
Okay. That's all, thank you.
Fellas?
That was my question, thank you.
Well, Tony S.
Uh, no questions.
Is there anybody in the audience that has anything to say about this pool? Come on up, speak to it.
My name is Nathan Marciano.
Nathan, I'm sorry, where do you live?
I live at fifty-one King George Road for your journey property.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
What would you like to add?
Uh, I read the application, I'd like to draw attention to one sheet. There's a tree there, I guess you may be aware of that trees. That tree is, uh, the main point of my concern. The tree is a half-dead tree. And good pool constructions, always said, never put a pool near a tree. Now, I've taken a picture of it. There's the, there's the pool, and here's the tree, there are dead limbs on the tree. I took a close-up of it. So you can see on the, in the, on this photo, that the bark is coming off the tree, this tree, the limb is dead, there are numerous, uh, dead branches. This tree is in danger of falling down, there used to be three trees on this, uh, lot, two of them have since fallen down under the prior ownership, ownership of prior owners. Anyway. If that tree falls down, or a limb falls down and hits the pool, it will cause a catastrophic failure of the pool, dumping three to four thousand gallons of pool water into the immediate area and the pool water normally has a concentration of chlorine of two to four parts per million, that level will destroy grass and shrubbery. So therefore, it will, will a significant amount of damage. My recommendation is to take down the tree. Then they could locate the pool more to the backyard less visible from the street, remove the, the hazard, by the way, there's a, a limb that goes right to and over the, onto the roof. So if that limb's a fall down, it's going to hit the roof. If that tree were to fall down it, it directing in the direction of my home, it would actually hit my house. This tree is in bad condition, if you would like to see the picture on clothes. You could see, uh, if you look at it on the close-up, you could see the bark is falling off the tree. Yes, uh, the board permitted to keep the pictures.
Thank you.
Now, with that in mind, that tree is a hazard to the pool. And, and for that reason. And the fact that it's, it's so close to the property line, I imposed the issuance of a variance. Well, I, I might add that the prior owner had put that floor up. And we, we had a, uh. A difference of agreement, he didn't think that he was there, uh. Encroaching on the property line, so I went ahead and got a survey from Sheridan Land Surveyors back in December. And they ended up having to take the pool down, I think it's because it didn't have a, a CO on it, because they put it up without a, a permit. And then, uh, a few weeks ago, I saw that, I saw the. It, it's back up. But this time I have a survey showing that it didn't meet the setback requirement. So I went over and I spoke to, uh, Mr. Henson about it, and he said he would move the pool. But since then, he's decided to go for a variance instead. It's much better to take that half-dead tree out. It may look nice, but it's not nice. If anybody has seen it, you'll see how, how bad it is. Then they can locate that pool in the middle of the yard, free of any, they won't need a, uh, variance, they don't have to worry about. Uh, anything happening. They're so much better off that way. So on that basis. Uh, I, I urge the board to, uh, not issue a varying. I also would like to add that I can't. It, it's so close to the property line that they can't plant shrubberies behind the pool. And if I put shrubbery in front of it, I run the risk of having the shrubbery damage, should they have a pool.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
I have no questions.
Tony S.
Uh, no question.
Good.
Could I add a couple?
Thanks. Yeah, well, why don't we see if there's anyone else who has any comments first, and then we can, you can respond afterwards, but you're all set, so you can, you can sit down.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience or in Zoom that has any further comments for forty-nine King George Road?
On Zoom? Anybody? No, because I'm.
Um, okay, so there was a number of, uh, comments that. This gentleman had presented. About, I mean, you have some pictures of the tree, the health of the tree. Um, I don't know if you can tell accurately from the picture, the health of the tree. Whether that's compelling or not. The survey was done, there's some dispute about where the actual markers were put with the survey. And, um. The owners have chosen not to challenge that at this time. And then there's some, um. The, uh, claim about putting bushes there, I, I don't know. What bushes there, there's enough on the side of that, I believe, the bushes, but. That's about like, I think that.
So is it an option, in your opinion, to. Relocate the pool? To more in the center of the yard?
Um, that I, I don't think it is personally, but, um.
Did you see the pictures, or you're familiar with the tree?
I didn't, if I could, yeah, I mean, alternative material in property.
Thank you, so.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And while you're looking at the pictures, just to clarify, the pool in question is the pool that's standing in those pictures?
I'm sorry?
The pool in question is the pool?
Yes.
Is there anything else you'd like to answer?
Back to, because of the previous owner, I decided this past December to have a survey, so we've been. Finally settled on where the property line was, and the survey was done by Sheridan Land Surveyors. I have a copy of the, uh, contract and the result of the land survey, if you'd like to have that. That should settle is the issue of where the property line is. By the way, they did find that there was a prior survey and the markers were still there. But I didn't see the stick, so I wasn't exactly sure where the markers were, I only had a rough idea. Where the what was, the pre-prior one thought he owned more of the land, which he didn't. And this is a copy of the survey that I have. Also in here, here's the sheet that I. Question that was missing and not showing the tree, if you could plug it up that as well.
Enter that in. Okay. I'm good. Christine, do you have any question?
No.
Phyllis, any question?
Just. To clarify, so this, what you call this, just to clarify. The tree. There's no place to put the pool on the other side of the tree closer to the deck. Thank you.
No, we should, um, thing which, you're gonna be too close to the house. It was certainly a ten, I believe it's ten feet, so I had from the home.
But not. I don't think it has to be, it's the, you have to be back from the property. Not your home.
I think building code is ten B.
Oh, okay, okay.
I, I think, I, it might be five feet, but it's definitely something.
Okay. Thank you.
Tony S.
All right, this question, I guess, for the neighbor. Does your survey indicate any issue regarding? Any of this that would be affected by the variance?
Uh, no, no.
No, okay, thank you.
Okay, your survey was, uh, done strictly on where the, the property was, it was originally another survey, but. I didn't know where the markers were, I've lost track of it over the years, it's been in that house.
But it, it wouldn't change any of the details regarding a variance if we granted, right? Like the distance to the.
No, I, it's, the way it is marked now, it's the way it's written in, in the application.
Okay.
Asking for some, what I think variance, and that's about what. The current survey would show is.
Okay.
The distance, just not, not the change.
All right, thank you.
It's just literally only proves where the, the line actually is.
Okay. Okay.
Just to confirm, um, building code is six feet from the house.
So, okay.
Uh, I like to have it. If it's moved, if the tree is moved, they could turn that pool ninety degrees, and it shouldn't. It shouldn't meet every, uh, requirement for setbacks. In the middle of pools, there really is no need for a variance. Uh, and it would place it there and require.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, there's no further questions, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you. That brings us to agenda item number. Six. Forty-one Sutton Park. Is there anybody here? How are you doing, sir? Please state your name for the record.
Oh, Tom Bergeini.
Tom, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Would you like to explain where your application goes, please? Oh, you can, yeah, did you want to sit up there too, I'm sorry? I guess state your name and then we can swear yours as well.
Arlene Perageini.
Arlene, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge? Yes, I do.
Would you like to explain your application?
Um, I have a small home improvement business, um, a van has glittering on it, there's no battery racks or anything like that on my truck. Fine, I guess it's special permit parking on.
Not that, by residential.
Let's close it, that's the name. So your, your hour. Your hours of business would be. When, when is the van usually parked, sir?
And it there, but usually it's like seven in the morning till five. Some days, it may be earlier, depending on job, but usually that most of the day.
So generally, more, if it's not there, you're off working and. And what are you storing in the van?
Just my hand tools and stuff. You know, saws, table saws, chop saws, stuff like that.
Okay. I don't have any other questions, Mr.
Um. Is it possible that you would be able to park the van? In the garage? Doesn't fit.
I'll be bothered to house me grant for, uh, six foot six openings, I, which is to me.
And that's all I have.
Phyllis?
Do you ever wind up storing? Refuse from the job in the van?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Like the garbage from the job, if you're doing a rental or whatever.
I have a portable dumpster that I keep on job sites.
Okay, then, who wants that, then carted away? Okay, no further questions.
Tony S.
Uh, no questions.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this application? I don't see anybody. Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to comment on this application? Forty-one Sutton Park. There are limitations on commercial vehicle parking that, that were established, right, and so, um, if it's a commercial vehicle, depending on how much. Signage it has on it, you may need, you may need a special use for technically to park on. Central lot, yes. Yeah.
So just to be clear, um, when you leave in the morning and then come back at night, you don't come back during the day for separate trips, so. Or how many vehicle trips would there be in a day?
Usually, most of the time I leave, I'm gone most of the day. Um, it's, sometimes if I forget something, I may come back, grab it, or if I need something abstract, um, but.
And there's nowhere else behind the front prop line of the house that you can.
We're just, it's the same, she'll need.
To just point out that he is self-employed, he doesn't have somewhere else to park it, like he's not employed by somebody else, he's self-employed, so it's his own damn.
I don't see anybody on Zoom, but just note for the record, there was a letter that was submitted by a neighbor that has, um, no objection to this. And that was the only letter, right? Uh, so that, so it was at the, it was like, that's all.
May I say, if it's probably known, that's why there's several neighbors, what if, they said they would have. Submitted, because I do, I help other neighbors out to maybe work on their house, but I'm charged to them. Um, yeah, I try to be good, you know?
All right, if there's no further questions, then I move to close the public hearing for. Uh, agenda item number six.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is carried. All right, thank you. Next up is item number seven. Ten Conklin Street. Is there anybody here for that application? Sarah Bragton. Is any, anyone on Zoom, uh, for ten Conklin? Okay, we can, while we hold off and come back to that one. Um, agenda item number eight. Twenty-five Raymond Avenue. All right.
Evening.
You state your name for the record?
Nancy Forrest with, uh. Gloody signs. Nancy, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge? I do.
Can you explain the application first, please?
Um, yes, this is for the Arlington project on, uh, Raymond Avenue. We are looking to do two monument signs. With directories on them. One at the only end, the south side of the property, which is the only entrance. To the property, and one on the separate lot, there are two different lots on the corner of the arterial and Raymond Avenue. I believe you have the, um, drawings of them.
Yes, we did. Uh, now the sign. On the arterial side.
That would be, um. Sign number two. On the. On your, uh, agenda. No, the arterial side, I'm sorry, sign one.
Sorry.
Yes.
Can you just explain that sign a little bit more? The location of it?
Yes, do you have the site plan as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It is on the, um, on the corner, we do require, um, a setback. Variance as well. Um, as you know, and variance is granted for the building is so close, um, to the road, both of. Mainly on Raymond Avenue, but also on, uh. On the corner of the arterial. Um. I think we have down here that they're looking for, um. Three variances. The height variance, I'd like to withdraw, I can bring that down, I'm not concerned. Uh, with the height variance, so that brings us to two, one would be the setback. And the other is the square footage.
The height variance on that is fourteen foot three. Well, I'm swinging three at its tallest, the variance was for two feet, three inches, because twelve feet is the maximum, right?
Yes, it's actually, um. It, that's including the base. So the sign itself is actually twelve foot nine inches to the top of the very peak, but then it has the base, so yes. So we would still include the base in the landscaping, we would just scale the sign down. To meet the twelve foot.
Did you receive a copy of the county comments?
I did, and I have some responses for that as well, yeah. They misinterpreted a couple of things, I don't think they read, like, everything through on the drawings as far as the lighting. That's totally wrong, your comments. So we can, whenever you go through that. Sure. We didn't think, when we, when we designed these, based on the fact that they approved a building with the amount of tenants that they had. Um, on nine Raymond Avenue, where the Bank of America and all is, is a sixty-four square foot. Directory sign also, um. You know, the same zone, zone the same, and has eight tenant panels on it. It's right next to Hurricane. So a three-story building there. So we kind of felt that, uh, we were okay in, um, in designing it, I didn't expect the county, um. To be so critical of it. But I think their lighting had a lot to do with it, because there may, they have it, they both signs that the, where the, uh, white or the off-gray is for the Arlington. Lights up white, it does not. The only thing on these signs that will light at night. The only thing on these signs that will light at night will be the Arlington letters because that gray is an opaque. And these are pushed through letters, so they're black during the day and at night they'll be white, but not brilliant white. And the same, the black backgrounds on the tenant panels are opaque as well, the only thing will light are the letters. And they're really quite small, the panels.
Don't have any other questions as far as application, Christine.
Not at the moment, I'm, I'm still just trying to figure some of this out, do you have anything I might got, so I'd like to go to the.
So, this is the map that I'll have. Where is this sign go, please?
Which one, there are two monument signs, one on each property. That one is going on the corner of the arterial. And Raymond Avenue, at the intersection side of Raymond Avenue.
Kind of a, kind of across from where the collision. Um, yes, monuments, yes, and then on the other corners, there's the one for the MRI place.
Yes.
And it has to be twelve feet high?
Um, if we're going to, if we're going to use a directory. Um, it would need to be, and, and it goes down there like slightly, and there is a tree line there um as well. As, as you know, the cables um coming down, the only people that are going to view that, like if they're driving on the arterial, they're not going to really. It's not because of the tree line, it's not like, they're gonna be like, they won't even really honestly notice it all that much. If they're stopped at the red light there, you know, and you're stopping, you're looking around, you, you may give visibility of the sign. On that one, I know the county was talking, you know, can that be just the monument sign without the directory?
If the sign is not going to be visible, the purpose of the sign.
It'll be visible if you're stopped, I just mean that based on where it's located, it's not going to be a beacon when you're coming up the arterial. Especially in the evening because there's very little of it lighting, but if you're stopped, you will see it. I'd like to get, you know, feedback from the board, how they feel about a directory on that corner. I mean, like your thoughts on it.
Well, I'm thinking if it's smaller and it doesn't have the directory. You know, if they're going there, you, they can just be told, like if they have.
So you want a monument that just had, that still has the stone and the, and the base and all that, but to just say the Arlington?
And then, yeah, make a right turn, um where, where you see the Arlington sign, and then you'll make the turn into the, into the next driveway. Uh, where the businesses are.
Cause on Raymond Avenue, you have to build all of those storefronts, they'll sit right up on Raymond Avenue, right? So it's uh, I imagine there'll be signage of some type.
Yeah, yeah, those will be more, I mean, with the restriction, we're not going to be going for variances for those. Um, they'll be more like when you're on the sidewalk and going in, not so much advertising. Cause if you're going down Raymond Avenue, that's where they start doing this, and you don't want them.
No, you don't want.
You know, and tho- those are going to be very, um, they're going to be externally lit, they're just going to be the fifteen square feet. They will be a black background with a white letter, um, a hidden light bar at the top, just kind of very dark at night. So we, you know, we don't want something in, in multi-colors, all tenants having different colors. Because you don't want to draw the eye off Raymond Avenue, it's too tight there, and that's right where it comes in the two lanes and everybody fights to get in there first.
And one of the things I, I was, I pointed out in my staff report too, was that like at uh the, at Eastdale, which is also a mixed-use project with a lot of different tenants, smaller tenants.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the monument signs that are on Duchess Turnpike, uh, say Eastdale Village, right? And so people know that's the destination, but none of the businesses um in there have tenant panels on those signs. Uh, they, some of the buildings do front on Duchess Turnpike, Rossi's, for example, I was, everyone knows. Um, and so that one does have a sign on Duchess Turnpike, cause that's where its front door is, but all the other businesses that on Eastdale Avenue on either side. Do not, um, and they seem, you know, that seems to work quite well at, at, at a destination like this. And so one thought was couldn't this.
They have streets in there, they have parking lots in there, they, you know, that's a little bit, a little bit different. Um, than the single building fronting on Raymond Avenue.
Right.
Um, I would speak to my clients um about altering the one on the corner of the arterial. And making that the Arlington sign on, bringing it down some in height. But I can't do like a four-foot monument sign because then it would be lost given the layer of the land there. But we could do something nice there and um design it without the uh tenants on it. But um the one on the south side, we really would like the tenants and. We, the way they're putting, like the base of that is eighteen foot, but that's because we want, you know, landscaping and stuff around it, the sign. Is not so much, and like I said, I designed that one based on the square footage of a variance granted for nine Raymond Avenue. And that we feel is safe in its location because it's the south side of it. And the traffic isn't going to be coming in from two lanes to one.
Right.
And it'll set back nicely there where they're going to landscape behind that, and they also have purchased the building next to it, moved to the house. And so that's all going to be done really nicely.
Uh, and that's just, that was a little more term to, to, right?
What's that?
That second.
Yes, yeah, a little bit, yeah. Cause you have sidewalks there and it all, but um at that point. Um, y- you'll be in a position, cause you're either coming down or up Raymond Avenue, and it'll be in your sight as you approach. Not just like right there on corner, the other one.
Tony asked.
Yeah, I know, so I have a question, I'm, I'm really not clear on which way this sign on the corner is facing, is it? Is it facing the um, somebody that's traveling across the arterial on Raymond Avenue? Or is it facing traffic moving along the arterial?
It's facing traffic moving east along the arterial.
Yeah.
But those stopped at the light coming down Raymond Avenue, like say in front of the collision shop, will also still be able to see it.
Okay, but I mean, the, the, the lettering is it, I mean, if I'm driving down the road, this is. Am I looking at the sign this way or is it parallel to the, parallel?
Depends on which road you're on.
Well, the arterial eastbound.
The arterial, it, it's, it's facing you.
It's facing me, if I'm driving on arterial eastbound, okay.
You'll see it, like looking at that sign.
Yeah.
Where I am, not like this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions on the board?
Well, for I guess I was put a vote on it, I'd like to see what the new one.
Well, if, if the board, that's what I'm, I'm asking, yeah.
So, we.
Yeah, we should still open up for public comments, but ju- just to the question, there were, there were a couple of issues with this, since. One was the, 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 the county's comments and, 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 and then the notification. Um, which we think we should re-advertise the public hearing, cause this was incorrect information in the notice.
Um, I noticed it was a little bit different on the agenda.
Yeah.
And that, I have no problem on, I, I, what I'd like to do if it's possible, because I think the one that we want on the south side. Um, I think that, was that correct in theirs and yours, or were they both off?
They were both.
Okay, so can we adjourn the public hearing? And I'll come back with the new drawing for the one on the arterial.
Yes.
And Raymond, okay. And then we can make sure, I kept reading it, I'm going, you know, the.
But it was noticed incorrectly.
Yeah.
Paper, but now it's, it, you'll renotice and it'll be fixed.
Okay.
So I think the board should provide some feedback to the applicant though, on the other sign, I think you've given feedback on the sign on the arterial. Is the board comfortable with the size of the sign and the contents of the other sign, or do you want to give the applicant some comments on that sign as well?
I will also just add one other thing is that we usually in a case like this ask for. Some comparison, right? So there's obviously the sign that you requested, which we, that one needs the variance. We usually ask for something that conforms to the code, which may very well be very obviously too small, I, I don't know, I'll see what it looks like, but. And then something in between to look at, so, cause the board also has to make a decision on. Whether it is the minimum variance necessary to achieve the purpose, and so.
Okay.
And so if you were coming back with additional. Uh, drawings, I, I would, I think the board should have the benefit of seeing those things.
Okay.
Wow.
This, yeah, just so I can explain to you, when we determine um the size, the amount of tenants that we have. There's a very clear formula of what size letter do you need to be visible at the speed or the distance from the road? So we always go with the middle of this, this, these are only, um, I think. The panels on the south side one are like sixteen inches tall and four foot wide. Uh, so they're not very big, if you go, if you go too small, now you're creating a hazard.
The signs on Raymond Avenue aren't really meant drivers, they're really meant for people walking through Arlington.
Right, and those.
And, and then, you know, you see that, that, that there's stores there and, and you'll learn where the stores are, but it's not really meant to be like out on Route nine. Where, you know.
Yeah, and, and we didn't design it to be on Route nine. Um, we wouldn't have used it with opaque backgrounds and just the lighting lettering, so it's not, you know, glaring.
Right.
Yeah, and like I said, the one on nine Raymond, um, that's been there a very long time, never created any issues as well. So we did try to keep it low-key and just the minimal size that we need, cause the tenants want advertising. And we want to get a tenant in, they want people to know that they're there, so um. Yeah, I can do something with that, um, but twelve square feet's just not a possibility though.
Well, I'd like to ask another questions, is it something, you know, would you consider having a, a sign? Like a wall projecting sign on, on the, the tenants' buildings rather than have this. Raymond Avenue?
Yeah. For walking, that would be okay, that's another thing, if you've got one after the other coming down like this, again, that front of that building is right where. The people are coming through the light and getting into one lane of traffic. And you, you don't, you don't want them, like, looking up there a lot, truly, you don't.
So the, so what you're saying is that the people, the businesses will have no signage in their front windows, it'll be nothing.
They will have, no, they're having one above, above their storefront, they'll all be exactly the same, the black sign with the white letters with their name. But they only allow fifteen square feet, so across the twenty, thirty foot storefront, very small. There, um, I believe they're one and a half by ten, yeah. They're like this tall and then uh ten foot in length, which sounds big here, but when you're i- in the car driving, it, it's really not. They're appropriate, um, and we're keeping them all identical. Nobody's getting to use a different color, like somebody has red and they go, well, then I want yellow and I want purple. But no, we are, we're keeping it very uniform, um, they will all have awnings above, all the same color, no lettering on the awnings. Just a very understated storefront sign, and as I said, that's more for where they enter, cause there's a center entrance too, and then some of them have an outdoor.
So do you have that, that plan, can we see that too for next time, right? Because it would be interesting to know what is going to be on those storefronts, right? Other, to know whether it's necessary to have a tenant house.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, um, I can, when should I have those things to you for, so you can distribute them?
Um, with, with the twenty-first.
The twenty-first? Okay.
Um, just additions to Mike's comment, I do like the idea of the one sign, just as a designation on the all arterial. Yeah, um, I'm not opposed to having the sign, the other sign as a directory. Uh, Jude referenced landscaping around it, which elevates it, could you also add that into the renderings as well?
Um, that would not be mine, I will try to get that from the landscapers, cause that was, was in with planning as far as getting there. Um, like if you know where the site trailer is now and then in front of that. That's all going to be landscaped, there's a row of, of really nice trees being planted there, and also it's going to be um quite green. If I can get that, I certainly will.
Okay, that would, cause that would give us some perspective on what that area is going to look like.
Mm-hmm.
Tony, do you have anything else?
Uh, no.
Uh, okay, um, is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this? Don't see anybody, is there anybody on Zoom that would like to comment on twenty-five Raymond Avenue? Okay, so I move that we adjourn this item uh for additional uh renderings to be provided at the July meeting, which is July tenth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Christina, you'll, uh, when you have that, you notice, Chris, you'll send me a copy?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, and I'll get that to you by the twenty-first.
Yeah.
Um. Thank you.
Okay, so the last item on the agenda tonight, number nine, AT&T Winslow Gate.
Yes, good evening, uh, this is Susan Burke from Saber Real Estate Advisors. Unfortunately, Marty Berger couldn't join us tonight, so um I have Joe Manfredi, our project manager, I believe he's in the room. There he is, um, and we do have a team from AT&T on the Zoom as well. It seems, uh, Lance, you want to introduce everyone?
Hi, yes, so my name is Lance Baker, and then I also have Austin Neil King and Gladys Ventura on the call as well.
What was the second name before Gladys?
Austin Neil, which is O-T-H-N-E-I-L, last name King.
And Susan, what's your name, sir?
Joseph Manfredi.
Okay, so Joseph, Lance, Austin Neil, Gladys and Susan. Do you all swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Would somebody like to please explain the application to us?
Sorry, we have so many people, um, so I, can, can I share my screen, are we still doing that?
Uh, you can, Susan, I might have turned that off before, let me just make sure, all right, go ahead and try it now.
So, um, we are here uh in an effort to uh, uh, receive. Uh, a variance on the height of the lettering for the AT&T store located Hudson Heritage. Um, the code that we wrote, or that I helped write. Um, only permits eighteen inch tall letters. Um, when I wrote the code, I tried to get a percent of the size of the facade. Because not every shoe fits every foot. Um, so AT&T, because the letters are very small. Or I should say not very wide, um, at eighteen inches. They tend to look like a zit on the facade, because it's just too small, if it was a. Uh, a word like Starbucks, it would take up more of the facade, so the presentation that I did, and it, it's kind of small, but. Um, if you can see, what I have now are the eighteen inch letters, and then those are the twenty-four inch letters, and they certainly. Um, fill the facade much better, the signage area. On both the same front and back. I think at the smaller size, it just looks like the architect screwed up, or the sign guy screwed up, or. Somebody was just too cheap to make it the correct size. Um, I have a picture of the storefront now that we've built the building, it's a beautiful building. It's a beautiful area, and it deserves the sign that does it justice. Um, you know, we have hard enough time getting tenants to rent. Um, you know, we have hard enough time getting tenants to rent anywhere these days. And AT&T, our tenant is a franchisee of AT&T. And AT&T has their standard signage, which is twenty four inches. And I believe that there is a twenty four inch sign on um, in Poughkeepsie, or it may even be larger, located at one nine three six South Road. The sign is humongous. Um, and then we also have the issue of being able to see it from Route nine, and I think Joe can speak more about that because he is on site every day.
I'm Joseph Manfredi, project manager. Coming uh Route nine northbound, uh where our entrance is to Hudson Heritage. You can see thirty five Winslow Gate Road, which is this building on the screen. AT&T is in the most northern uh space in the building, which is L one. You can hardly see L one from Route nine with the sign. That is the view, correct. Um, with that variance, I believe with the branding of AT&T, that sign will be proportionate to that facade that we built um, in the front and the back. Uh, and I think it's it's very important for AT&T for the branding to have everything proportionate so that the ball is not super small or AT&T letters are super small. The facade is twenty two foot wide and about uh thirteen or fourteen foot wide. With this variance, it would fit very nicely in that in that space, along with the supercut sign that's going right next to it that will complement each particular facade. So one sign doesn't look super big and one doesn't look super small. Everything will flow very nicely on that building.
You know, the point being that in other areas, we have a percent of the facade is wha- what what is is permitted. So if you have a hundred foot facade and you're allowed ten percent, then everything stays in proportion. If you have eighteen inches for everybody, it doesn't work. CVS doesn't have eighteen inch letters. They're in proportion to the building. And with AT&T, because there's only, there's only a couple of letters. It's so tiny widthwise, it looks stupid that short. And it's not, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not even over the allotted square footage or the permitted square footage. So if we were going to go over the permitted square footage, I would understand that, but we're still within that. It's just getting tougher and tougher to get tenants if I, if we can't get a little leniency from the town. We have a lot of national tenants and we worked hard to get national tenants and good tenants and a good mix here. We need to keep going.
So um, my question is from from the drawing. The actual globe stays the same. It's a question of the lettering increased or it's the overall sign increased?
The globe, it's the overall sign.
So overall proportionate, so the globe would get a little bigger. AT&T would get a little bit bigger.
Okay, that's correct. AT&T has specific guidelines. Um, the text has to be a certain size in relation to the globe. So if one gets larger or smaller, the other gets larger or smaller with it.
Thank you.
No, I'll see what this question.
Is AT&T going to be noted on panel sign? Right, there's a lining sign beginning.
Yes, on the pylon, yes, it will be.
It will be.
Yes.
On the south side, on the southern pylon, not on the northern pylon.
The southern pylon is the one by Chipotle or? So I'm a little confused because you kind of referenced CVS, but you don't have as big a frontage on the AT&T building the CVS, right? Or am I mistaken?
No, but CVS's ladders are proportionate to the building.
Has different regulations.
Oh.
Yep, there's the different building numbers. The walkable area has um eighteen inch letter height, whereas CBS and the commercial non-residential buildings located off Main Street area Winslow Gate Road are allowed to be thirty six inches high.
Yeah, the shop right and the CBS were pulled out from that because they were considered the um, anchor tenants, I guess, for the project when we wrote the regulation. So CBS and ShopRite have watch letters. The rest of the Main Street has small ones.
Correct, but that was just, I mean, obviously, because it would look ridiculous if it was eighteen inches. So I I just think that we we have to use common sense. This is a tiny sign. Eighty, it's four, it's four letters. If it was super cuts, it would be different because it's much wider, so it fills the facade. It looks okay. This looks ridiculous that small.
They could go up to thirty six.
No, not in not where they're located.
Thank you.
No, but but we are within our square footage. We should have an either or. If we don't exceed the square footage, we should be okay.
I do.
Yeah.
So you have and I'm sorry about this. You have um, AT&T on a gray facade, and then you have the AT&T on the red brick. Is the red brick the back of the store?
That's correct. The red is. Um, well, so the red is rear or Route nine facing the um uh stucco is the Winslow Gate facing.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Oh, yes.
Oh, no, no question.
Um, I just have one question. Is this, where does this fall in the size of the other buildings in the project? Is this the largest of the within the walkable area? Or is this on a smaller end? Like supercuts appears to be small.
Su- supercuts is um the ten foot with the eighteen inches. Uh, Q and Brew has more letters, but they fall proportionate in that variance of the ten foot by eighteen inches. AT&T would be the only one with the six inch variance that we're asking for, but still would be in proportionate to the facade and supercuts looking at it from a distance.
So is it a larger store than the other ones that are there?
Um, no, they're all for the, there's five units, four of the units share the same square footage where Q and Brew is uh twice and a half square footage.
And the facade is a different size.
It's a different size, L three, which is a little bit bigger than the other ones because it's the middle of the uh of the building.
L three is the one, is this one here?
Okay, well, okay, thank you. Okay, that's all the questions.
So one of the things, um, you, I'm sure you saw the county's comments, right? They um recommended uh denial. So under New York State law, um, in order to risk, to receive the variances, you would need to have a super majority vote of a board of seven. So you would need five affirmative votes. One of the things unfortunately tonight is that we have four people here. Um, so there's not a mathematical way to get five votes. So our suggestion would be uh to adjourn the public hearing to next month where we would have a full board and uh hopefully have a full board. We usually do. Um, and possibly be able to get the five votes then. But um, but we won't be able to, you certainly can't get a vote in the affirmative tonight.
It's fine. Can I bring any additional information for the next uh meeting to uh help get a census of what we're looking for? In the meantime.
Mark, are you asking if there's more information that the board needs or are you asking what the board is thinking?
Any information I can provide the board to grant the variance? If there's any information needed.
Here we have the conforming sign and the requested sign. I don't know with six inches of having you know, one that's a three inch variance would be worth seeing or not. Maybe not, um, in this case, because it's but it's up to the board.
Can you stop sharing your screen, Susan?
Sir, when you answered Tony's question and you talked about the proportion sizes of the signs and you the supercut and the Bruce. That was very helpful. If there's a way, at least it was for me. Um, because I went up there and I did the visual, but just to be able to see that and have a conversation about it might be helpful.
Okay, um, I I can assure you that six inches from thirty feet away is is probably nil to to the difference of what we're talking about. Uh, it comes down to the ball size because that's the branding of AT&T. So you know, as Lance said, you know, if we make the letter smaller, the ball gets smaller, right? And that's the proportion that we want to be correct on the building because that's the branding of AT&T. Um, some AT&T stores say authorize uh retailer also in their signs that we've seen. They're not asking for that. They're just asking for the, you know, the globe in AT&T. And we want the the globe to be proportionate to the facade and and the rest of the building.
And just so that we can close the loop, AT&T doesn't ever do signage. That's only the globe. Because it's only the lettering that you need the variance for, not the globe.
That's correct.
So there's no globe only option.
I'm sorry, ma'am. I wish there was, but they're branding the way it is. Um, we're trying very hard to to make this tenant um come into our facility. And and right now, this is what's hanging us up. So I I hope the board can understand why we come here in person and try to uh show you especially pictures of the building um, to give you a visual on on what we're looking for. We're not looking for thirty six inch letters. We're not looking for anything, obviously, that would pull your eye right to that facade. We're just trying to make it look proportionate to the the brand new building and the other signs that we have on that building going in as well.
I appreciate your comments.
Yes.
Um, okay, so we're going to look to adjourn.
We'll adjourn, but if anyone's on, you should ask.
So while we're here, is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this application as far as the um, the signage goes? You know, the opportunity.
I have a question.
Sure.
Wh- what is to happen if there aren't enough board member? Like what what happens if we adjourn this and then the next month it's the same case? Because I think this has happened more than one time before.
Yeah, actually, the last time you had it, you had enough people, but the it didn't look favorable, I think, was the issue. So they they offered an option. The the chairman, who's not here tonight, but um, had offered to say, if you want to have instead of six people here, seven people here, why don't you try to wait till next month and and maybe that'll help with the numbers. Um, this time it's really no mathematical way, so we can't just, you know, do, we can't do that this time. Um, we usually have a fuller board. This is a little bit unusual, but I can't, there's no way for us to tell you with certainty that we're going to have seven people here next month because we haven't asked them yet if they're going to be here. They, most of the board members try to be here month after month. This is an exception, not not the way it usually is, so.
I have a proposal. They they want to open up June twenty ninth. They're on about, okay? Um, the next board meeting is in July, correct?
Yes.
July tenth. If we get a temporary sign with the dimensions that we want to put on the building as temporary until we agree on the sign. So you can see what the variance would look like. Would that be okay?
Yeah, you're allowed to have a larger temporary sign.
If I get one exactly what we're looking for? Exactly the size that we're looking for?
I mean, if that would benefit the board.
If that would benefit the board.
You're allowed to have a larger temporary sign.
Yes, yeah, yep.
So you'd need a temporary sign permit. You'd have to work that out with Chrissy. But if you were to put that up and you could let someone you know, then the board would have an opportunity to go visit and see what it looks like prior to the next.
Exactly. I think that would benefit everybody on the board.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else on Zoom? Anyone else on Zoom had any comments on this one? I think everyone is with AT&T, but only one person is not. And that's a going once, going twice. So adjourn.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
So I moved to adjourn it till the July meeting, which is July seventh. All those all those favor?
I.
I. Opposed. Motion is carried.
And I see that the applicant for
Tony's very fatiguedly reminding you. Uh, so revisit number seven sixteen ten Conklin Street.
Oh, I see, yeah. Okay, I see him now.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Sarah Bragdon.
Sarah, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do, yes.
Sarah, why don't you explain your application?
Um, I would like to, I I would like a special use permit to have an accessory apartment in um the walkout basement of my house on ten Conklin Street in New Hamburg. It's it has plenty of parking, I believe it. It satisfies all the requirements. There was a question about the septic, I think, that I tried to answer with a letter, um and explaining that the the house is four bedrooms and upstairs are three bedrooms and a den. And so this downstairs apartment would be a studio apartment and be the other bedroom. So it would be a four bedroom house and it's um the CFO was for a four bedroom house with the septic, and so it really wouldn't change anything about the septic um code or qualification. So, um, I did write a letter and I sent it yesterday. I don't know if, or the day before yesterday, I don't know if you had a chance to read it because it was pretty quick. If you'd like me to, I can read it. Um, if not, my explanation might be satisfactory. I've had an inspection of the septic. There's an alternate septic that's been designed for the property in case anything should fail, but in terms of the apartment changing anything around um, whether the septic can can support the apartment or not. Um, it's just the fourth bedroom and a four bedroom house, basically.
Yeah, I I mean, my question was really just was that, and you answered it as far as uh to my satisfaction. I guess the only question I would have is that, you know, if and and um if we made it conditional on there not being more than four bedrooms in the in the building, uh, just because if someone came in later converted the den, let's say, to a fifth bedroom, right? And and technically that would, that would be violation of what the Department of Health has approved for your septic system, which and I'm not suggesting anyone's going to do that, but that could just be a condition of the specialty use permit. It'd be four bedrooms in the house total. As long as it stays that way, it's fine. That's what it was designed for. And that seems to be meet the 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 one question. Yeah, so.
So the question, so this doesn't change the exterior of the house at all? It's just you're going to utilize the basement as the accessory apartment?
Yes, actually, it's it's kind of already there. The was, it was designed that way and the bedroom already exists down there. It's called a rec room now and pay taxes for the rec room in the basement, and I just wanted to convert that into an accessory apartment. It wouldn't change the facade at all. Wouldn't change anything. Hopefully, I won't have to do much, honestly.
And uh, Ms. Bragden, have you checked with the building department to make sure that you do meet the requirements for building code in the apartment?
I I think basically I need the special use permit first.
Okay, yeah, I just, I, you know, you, if, you know, you have to get a building permit afterwards, I just, you know, make up. Hopefully, you meet all the criteria that they need.
Yeah, they haven't, I I mean, actually Bruce came to look at it in two thousand and ten, so it has been looked at by the building department. And at that time, he said everything was good except for you can't put a stove in there because you need uh ceiling tiles that would be fireproof. And so I'm assuming because he had looked at it in two thousand and ten that nothing would need to change except maybe some fireproofing, um, if I wanted to put a stove in there.
Currently, you're not putting a stove in there. You're just doing a kitchenette?
Yeah, currently, yeah, there's no stove in there and uh I'll talk to the building department about if I wanted to put a stove in, what I would need. Okay.
That's your question, Fred Christine.
No, no questions.
No, no questions.
Yeah, no questions.
Okay, does anybody from the audience have any questions on this application? Anybody on Zoom?
And this is the application of ten Conklin Street?
Yes, ten Conklin.
Just to post, okay, I don't see. So I leave to those the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
I.
Post. That motion is carried. Okay, so that closes the public comments section of the agenda tonight. Um, we need to find a straight friend.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could use one.
Okay, I move to reconvene at seven thirty five.
Yep. Okay, so we'll be back at seven thirty five.
Okay, welcome everybody back to the meeting. Um, so at this point in time, we're going to discuss as the board the items presented. Um, okay, so let's start. We're gonna go right down the order because we still have a lot of people here. Okay, um, but agenda item number one, twelve Catskill Avenue, uh, the applicant.
Click cable.
Fourteen. Uh, fourteen Catskill Avenue. The applicant is looking to put a pool in in there. Um, does anybody have any objection?
Wonder where else it would go.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean.
Um, I don't, um, in reviewing the property without taking the tree down and doing some different things with the property, I don't really see any other options for him. Um, so I do have these findings that I would like to offer into record. Um, whether the whether the application would create a create an undesirable change uh, will produce it would produce to the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. I don't think so, as they have stated, we observe, have observed, there are several other pools in the uh, vicinity and none of the neighbors appear to have any objections. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by a similar method or any other feasible applicant uh, for the applicant to pursue uh, pursue. I think yes, uh, but locating the pool, um, there's a proximity to the deck and some tree work that would have to be done, so I don't think that there is other options presented for them. Um, and whether the request, the variance is substantial based on the lot size, I don't believe so. Uh, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district. Um, not there's no evidence of any, and whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, uh, I don't, uh, yes. It is, but I don't see that there's a reason to deny. I know I offer those findings into so.
They move that board approved the request for an area variance set forth in item number one. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair. So. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And the motion carries. Um, that brings us to item, uh, agenda item number two. For Clayton Place, um, the applicant would like to put a dormer on an existing structure. Um, the dormer doesn't exceed any of the uh, existing parameters of the house. Um, I do understand that there was the letter and the testimony offered in the public. Um, but I do offer these findings into into record. Uh, whether the, whether the change uh, will bring whether an undesirable change will be produced would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. I think it's consistent with other houses as staged in record and observed by the path the panel um, with other houses in the neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant uh, could be achieved through another method. I don't see any other feasible with the way that the house is in adjacent properties. I don't see any other feasible alternative. Um, whether the request of the area variance substantial, um, neither numerically nor practically. Whether the purpose variance, purpose of the variance will have an adverse effect on the physical environmental characteristic characteristic of the neighborhood. Uh, there's no evidence of any impact. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, yes, but I don't see this as a reason to deny, and I offer those types.
I move that the board approved the request for an area variance set forth in item number two. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing and the results of site visit by board members. In approving this variance, the board adapts the findings as set forth by the chair. So.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? The motion carries. That brings us to item, uh, agenda item number three. Uh, forty eight Tamara, Tamara and Iraq Hill Drive. Um, so the applicant is looking to uh, uh, replace and extend existing fencing. Um, as they described, the fencing's been there for a while. They're looking to upgrade it and uh, extend it based on how their property is. I offer these findings into record. Uh, whether the, whether the change will be undesirable to the character of the neighborhood. Um, this is an upgrade and an adding to existing fencing. Uh, whether the benefits sought for the applicant to be achieved by a similar method uh, based on the lot size and the arrangement. Um, I don't think there are any alternatives. Uh, it's it's kind of in a depressed area. Uh, whether the requested area variance is substantial, yes, it is numerically and practically, but I think it's within expectations. Uh, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect, uh, there's no evidence of any impact. And whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, uh, yes, but that is no, I offer no reason for it to deny. Um, and I offer those findings get to record.
Okay, uh, I move that the board adopt the the variance request um, from forty, uh, for item number three, forty eight Tamrac Hill Drive. And uh, this is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing and the result of site visits by board members. And uh, can approving this variance, uh, the board adopts the findings uh, set forth by the chair.
Any further discussion?
Second.
Thank you. That's that's discussion. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. Uh, item agenda number four. This is nine Forest Avenue. So the applicant looking to put a fence on one side of the property. Um, just to clarify, it's a six foot fence. Uh, there was a mention of an eight foot in the application, but this is a six foot fence. Um, I offer these findings into record. Uh, whether it would create an undesirable change uh, to the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. Um, I don't think that it is. I think that there's other fences in the area that are of similar style and height. Uh, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by an uh, some other method or feasible for a way to pursue. Um, I don't think from what she's trying to uh, achieve that that would be, that there isn't an alternative. Uh, whether the request for the variance is substantial, I don't believe it is, especially with the six foot fence. Um, whether the purpose of the variance will have an adverse effect or impact on other on the environment uh, or the neighborhood or district, there's no evidence to any impact. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, uh, yes, but I see no reason to deny, and I offer those can findings.
Uh, I move that the board approves the request for an area variance set forth in item number four. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Brings us to item, agenda item number six, sorry, five, I'm getting ahead of myself. Um, forty nine King George Road. Applicant is looking to put a pool um, in the backyard. And I would like to discuss this one a little further, get everybody's feeling. So we had uh, a neighbor expressed was a concern over the tree. Uh, being out of the property, I see that the tree is you know, pretty much centrally located in the property. Uh, from the pictures, I think we see the is some age that the tree shows. So, all right, what is your thoughts?
They they've come to the board for a variance because of the, because of how close it is to the property line. Um, the tree has been there for a long time. I don't know, how do you feel about me to ask the owner to cut down the tree and then move the pool? Um, I I mean, I suppose if something were to happen that the owner's going to be responsible for for any damage.
So I would add two points for the board's consideration. Thank you. That's unusual. Um, one is that um, you granted a variance just earlier tonight. Be moving a pool location because there was a tree there. Um, so it would seem consistent to grant, allow to grant a variance with this one because there's a tree. And as Christine said, it absolutely would be on the owner that if anything were to happen, if the pool, you know, a tree were to fall to the pool, a tree were to fall to the house, um, that's on them and that would be a neighbor dispute between, you know, the two neighbors. And it would be up to the the their insurance company to sort that out, so.
We consider a condition to have the tree looked at by professional. That being.
You could, but the point being that you've already granted the variance to allow the pool to remain where it is.
Right.
So having it looked at, um.
I mean, it might be wise for the owner to have the tree looked at, given the concerns that were raised. I don't know if they thought about that before because they are responsible. But
I would say.
Not a condition.
Exactly. I would do it as a recommendation perhaps to the owners. Um, but I don't know that I would condition the variance because then they would have to submit to us that they actually had it done before and they just.
How do we make a recommendation?
It's just, I I think we just did.
Okay.
I don't know that, I mean, if you wanted to, you could do it as a motion that the board, you know, make a recommendation to the owner to have the tree looked at, but um, I think the the meeting record will speak for itself.
Okay. What else have any for?
Uh, no, I mean, I just think it would have been great if the neighbors had this discussion before, before coming here, but apparently they did not, so. I I kind of agree with what the Lisa's point and Christine's.
Okay. All right. Um, so I offer these findings into record, whether the, whether the application would create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. I don't believe so. There's other pools in the area and um, I think it is consistent with the character. Whether the benefit of the applicant could be achieved by some other method, um, feasible to, feasible for the applicant to pursue uh, other than the variance. Based on the lot size and the consideration of the tree and the layout, I don't believe that there is. Um, whether the request of the areas variance is substantial, either numerically nor practically. Uh, whether the the post variance will have an adverse effect on it, impact. You have an adverse impact or impact on the physical environment conditions, neighborhood or district. Or impact on the physical environment conditions neighborhood or district, there is no evidence to any impact. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, uh, yes, but I do not see this as a reason to deny now for those to find. Phyllis.
Uh, I moved that the board approved the request for an area variance set forth in item number five. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant. Testimony offered in the public hearing and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Second.
Any further discussions? All those in favor?
I.
I.
Close. That motion carries. Um, item, uh, agenda item number six, forty-one Sutton Park. Uh, this is the parking of a commercial vehicle in a residential home. When driving in the neighborhood, I think that we saw, there was a lot of, I mean, it's a very busy road. It's very, uh, it's a through road in the part, uh, in the, in the development. I think there's a lot of traffic there, there was a lot of, uh, other vehicles. Um, so I don't see any concern with it. Does anybody have any other comments, or? There was a letter that was. Put in for, in support. My neighbor. Kind of, so I offer.
Yeah, the two, I mean, just for, from the staff report, the two requirements that we had questions about, they did answer, uh, and I think they answered them in a matter that. Supports the, uh. The notion of a special experiment for the, for the vehicle, right, that they're, um, only parked there primarily during non-business hours. That's really two trips per day, I mean, unless, you know. Occasionally something else, but so I think that, that. It all, the criteria are met.
Okay. So I offer these findings, or you can.
It doesn't matter which one goes first.
Just staff report, so. Oh, you have to do the neck deck first, because this is an unlisted action.
Right.
So. Okay, yeah.
Let's be a.
Environmental assessment, um, thank you.
Uh, so based on the short environmental assessment form, um, I asked the board to find that there are no other. Involved agencies declare itself as the lead agency and adopt the resolution. Um, of non-significance in the matter of item number six, and the board act as lead agents.
Second.
You have to vote.
Okay, uh, all those favor?
I.
And the opposed? So that motion carries. Now it's the.
Now just do the re- resolution.
Tony?
Okay.
Staff report for.
Yeah, there's a staff report, okay, so this is a motion to. Approve, um. A special use permit for, uh. Com- a commercial vehicle parking at forty-one Sutton Park Road. Uh, so I move to approve the request for a special use permit set forth in, uh, item number, uh, six. Uh, the decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony gathered during the public hearing. Results of the site visits by board members and the staff report, and it meets the. Uh, requirements, uh, criteria is a fourth in the town code. Uh, and, uh. And also, this is based on the, uh, the findings in the found in the staff report. Uh, we don't have any conditions on this, I believe, right? Okay, so, uh, I, I move that the, uh, the board, uh. Approve this motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
And. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Agenda item number seven. Ten Conklin Street. Any, any further discussion on them?
So just again, from the staff report, the one question that I have related to the septic, I think, yeah. Applicant answered that question. Satisfactorily, the only thing I was gonna suggest was just a condition again, that, that the house remained a four-bedroom, so. Um, because that's what the septic system is approved for, so. And I don't think. I'll just make that one.
And then anything further would be handled, as Christie's pointed out, building department.
Yeah.
So, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, um, so based on the short environmental assessment form, I asked the board to find that there are no other. Involved agencies and declare itself as the lead agency and adopt a resolution of non-significance in the matter of. Item number seven, and the board act as the agency. All those a claimer?
I.
I.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Do you mind? And. The recommendation, uh.
Right, for the special use, okay. I move that the board prove the request for a special use permit. Set forth in item number seven. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant. Testimony gathered during the public hearing, results of site visits by board members. And the staff report, and that it meets the criteria set forth. In the town code. Uh, the approval of this special use permit is subject to the following condition, which is that, um. The house remain a, a four-bedroom house and no other additional bedrooms be added on, so.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Fine.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Agenda item number eight was adjourned, from eight and nine were both adjourned until July's meeting. So where goes there? We do have two more like items on the agenda. Lead agency request by the planning board for minor land contour permit, um, at the address of. Thirty-five oh nine North Road. Uh, does anybody have any?
Just want to point out that is a major land contour permit, um, which is correct on. Sheet with the agenda added, uh, as a minor, but it's a major land contour permit, um, but yet the planning board is. Intend on being lead agency. That's okay with everyone?
Okay.
Yep.
So.
So what you would do is make a motion for the, uh, ZBH to consent to the planning board being the agency on the site.
Okay, so I make a motion for the zoning board of appeals to make the planning board lead agency on thirty-five. Oh nine North Road.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
I.
That motion is carried. Second request is for the planning board to, uh, be the lead agency on two fifty-eight Raymond Avenue.
Oh, well, not that's the wrong address, um. Then it is the Fairview Firehouse, which is, yeah, which is at Violet Ave, two fifty-eight Violet Ave.
Okay. Give me that, where are you talking about?
Yeah, I, I was like, what? Um, yeah, the firehouse is looking to do a small, well, they're making some modifications to the existing building, and then they had, uh. Petition for some, uh, some big equipment. Um, and they're coming to the planning board for site plan, so it has to be lead.
Is there any concern with that? Okay, so I make a motion for the zoning board of appeals to.
Consent.
Consent to the planning board to be lead agency for two fifty-eight rate Violet Avenue.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Any opposed? That motion carries. I move the June meeting for the zoning board of appeals is adjourned.
All right.
All favor?
Nice work, man.